Folks, it is seven o'clock and we will call to order the August sixth meeting of the Adrian City Planning Commission. We could have a call, a roll call if we may.
Skobitz.
Present.
Love's absent, Wetherby is absent, Johnson.
Present.
Watson. Taylor.
Present.
Gauss.
Present.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. Uh, next item on our agenda is consideration of the minutes from our July meeting. Commissioners, I presume you've had an opportunity to review those minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the July minutes? If there are none, we would entertain a motion for their approval.
Who's approval is written?
Or the motion and support, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Uh, the next item on our agenda is um consideration of a planned unit development in its preliminary plan uh for eight one eight Riverside Avenue, the uh most recent former Bixby Hospital. As you may recall, we last heard the developer on this in May when we heard an informal presentation on this project. Uh, it was a very conceptual form, more to gauge the project's uh potential than than it is to review or judge any real specifics at that time. Um, is there a representative of the of that developer here? Sir, if you'd step forward and give us your name. Give me just a minute to to bring us up to date on this. My understanding is that we're going to review a preliminary development plan. And as I explained at our May meeting, this is the opportunity for the developer to provide the app, the developer, us to provide the developer with feedback uh and comment. It has been proposed, proposed that the property be zoned as a planned unit development, a P U D. The intent of a P U D is to promote progressive development of land specifically to maximize the choice of living environments by allowing a variety of housing and building types. If the project is to go forward, uh, the developer will need to come back with a final proposal uh some point in the future, which hopefully would address any deficiencies or issues that have been identified in the interim. Uh, and if given final approval by the planning commission at that point, uh, the pro proposal would then need to go to the city commission for final approval. Uh, with that said, if you would uh identify yourself for the record and very briefly tell us what it is you're proposing to do.
My name is Scott Gibson. Um, I uh am here representing eight one eight Riverside Avenue LLC, which is the entity that is developing the former Bixby site. Uh, we are currently laying out the project as a sixty-three unit, single-family uh residential for rent uh uh P U D. Uh, that you can see that the density is a little higher than the standard uh residential code allows for. It's doesn't quite fit garden rise apartments, which is about twelve units per acre. This lands that are between eight and nine units per acre, so we opted to go with the P U D. So the plan is to provide, as we stated back in May, is to provide a uh missing middle housing project for uh citizens of Adrian that supports individuals. Our target is uh folks that make eighty to one hundred and twenty percent of AMI. So that's been the target from the inception and that's still the the target for the project.
Commissioners, you have a preliminary diagram of this project? Do you have questions for Mr. Gibson? Really? Well, I I have a few.
Please.
You know, I take it you're familiar with the requirements for the P U D.
Yes, that we've been going through them, yes.
Okay, because some of the things that I don't see on the preliminary site plan uh are a legal description of the property.
We we have that. Um, we can remedy that.
Uh, a development schedule?
Yep.
Again, this is stuff we I thought we would have received prior to this meeting.
Okay.
Something showing that you have legal control of the property, either a purchase agreement?
We've provided that to the city. The city has that. I think Greg could speak to that.
Okay.
Yeah, as far as that's concerned, we do have that. We are aware of that. Um, we have been working. So the situation here is that they have it's an unusual sort of purchase agreement with ProMedica. They have a lease that converts to ownership at the point where the hospital building is demolished essentially. And um because they are in that lease stage still now, we did ask for a permission letter from the property owner. I had a conversation with ProMedica's council yesterday. I thought we were clear on the specifics of that. Turned out we weren't exactly. He did send a permission letter, but uh it made assumptions about the way the P U D process works that were inaccurate. And so he promised he would have a a corrected one before you would get to your final stage.
Okay, so that.
Which would if the final stage, uh, of course effectuates the rezoning, which is the concerning step.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the other thing that's that's in the ordinance that I don't see here, and and maybe it's here and I'm just missing it, is a written statement uh setting forth the reasons why this should be a planned unit development and why it's in the public interest.
I could speak to that if that would be okay, and then I can.
If you would, yes, please. Uh, if you would do that now, but also, uh, like I said, the the expectation is that we receive it in writing.
Sure, but I I will make sure that that happens. So that we 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 believe that uh we're trying to take a space that's limited by about seven point four or five acres. I believe it's a specific new uh parcel layout that we're proposing. We had to be a subdivision, so we did a lot split. Uh, our agreement with ProMedica did not afford us with the opportunity to have the full parcel, so we subparceled it out. And so we believe that for the type of community that we're trying to develop and in an effort to right-size things, we wanted to come to this density that is pretty standard with pocket communities. A lot of different pocket community designs are somewhere between ten and twelve units per acre. Um, there is a benchmark project that we've been follow, you know, kind of using as a guide that's called the Black Apple. It's in Bentonville, Arkansas. I'm developing some projects there. It was uh one of the Walton family members developed that project to show how a smaller space for infill can be utilized to get a higher density and still provide a right-sized housing product to support more affordable either rents or purchase opportunities. So when looking at this project, looking at the site, we felt like getting at least fifty units um and working within the current P U D, you know, setbacks and all these types of things that exist. We wanted to do at least fifty. Whenever we started laying everything out, we realized that we could do even more than sixty-three, but we landed on sixty-three. We think that that gives it a higher density. It gives it a small, like, pocket community feel. If you look at the design, there's individual green spaces that are encapsulated by homes that face those green spaces with common walkways that connect everybody. So we're trying to give it a higher density kind of neighborhood, single-family feel. Just to have that kind of, you know, know your neighbor. And then also on top of that, again, having units that are slightly smaller, the national average for new homes, I think, is around twenty-four hundred square feet for a single-family home. Um, a lot of the homes that are on the market here are somewhere between thirteen and hundred and it seems like eighteen hundred for a lot of the existing housing stock. Our houses are going to be somewhere in that, like, eleven hundred to fourteen hundred range, plus or minus. If you look, there's some um elevations in floor floor plates and whatnot that would rep that represent what we are proposing building there. So that's that. That's why we elected to go with the P U D is because it gives us the higher density. Let's just show that 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 unique pocket community design and feel, which currently isn't, um, there's not a zoning category that supports that type of use.
Commissioners, other uh, if you have other questions for Mr. Gibson, this would be a good time to ask those. As soon as we're done with that, uh, we will entertain public comments on this project.
Couple of questions.
Yes.
This this layout, so the cancer center is still there?
Right. And will continue and will continue to be there at least.
Three to five years is what we're hearing. We we tried to get that. It just didn't happen. So.
Do you have aspirations to do something when that?
Yes, assuming that this all goes to plan and it it's a good value for the community and everybody, then yes, we would love to do a second phase.
Um, and along the same lines, so you obviously don't build all these units at once, correct? So what's to say you start? You get the first fifteen of them on Riverside and then there's no interest. What's?
Well, we.
That's my question.
Currently, currently.
Crappy-looking ground that's all chewed up that nobody wants.
Well, so, good question. I'll I'll answer this in a couple of parts. First and foremost, because we're developing this in parallel with tearing down the hospital at the same time, we have a we're going to have a grading plan that will already be basically done prior to the hospital being torn down and and finished. So the current plan with what we're doing there is we're going to be grinding up certain components, concrete, other things that we can use to help balance things out and do different things. Um, the idea is is our plan that we will be getting approved will be graded and rough graded in once the site is complete and the hospital is down. So to answer that question, the layout will already be, the rough grade will already be completed. And much of the existing infrastructure that's on Riverside, Camoli and what have you, if you look at the egresses, how the curb and gutter is and different, and even some of the parking lots and how that works. We're we're proposing that we can maintain some of that to have an economic benefit there. We've done some calculations. We think it saves the project eight hundred thousand dollars to be able to to use that existing infrastructure. That makes sense. And so that's why when you look at the site plan, it incorporates some of that existing uh layout, if you will, right? So to your point, the the reality is we are proposing to do all of it. There is a scenario where maybe we say, hey, listen, let's do thirty units or forty units or whatever, and we will we'll talk about that and go through that. But our our proposed plan is to go ahead and do them all now. And that's but that that's there's a couple of different things that would cause that to be different. Typically, it's usually access to however the financing would shake out. But fifteen doesn't really work. I mean, I know that's a number you just pulled out of the air. But we we have to get a certain level of density for it even to make work, to make it work for us. And for we think minimally, it's twenty-four to thirty-two units. Minimum is what we would build in the first phase regardless of how everything shakes out.
What would be the timing of your build out?
So we're looking to, we're looking to have the hospital down. There's been some abatement issues there. There were some things that got added that we that were unbeknownst to us, so we've had to push that back. That schedule's protracted another eight weeks. So our goal is to have that down by the end of November. And then I think to finalize, assuming this development process goes well with the P U D, site plan gets approved, et cetera, then the plan would be, given where we currently are at, is that we would have our financing and everything put together in February is what we're targeting.
How many years, how many years do you have? You anticipate before you build out the whole the whole project?
Well, currently, as it's slated, as you see, it is sixty-three. Um, that would be our goal. I mean, the the if that's answering your question.
My question was, how many years do you think it's going to take to do that?
Years.
Oh, years.
He it sounded like he said units.
I'm sorry. Sorry, I was confusing years and units. Sorry. Um, thank you for clarifying that. Uh, it's single-family, goes up quick. I mean, it 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 should be no longer than twenty-four months. I mean, Lisa, for 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 looking at the the housing study for the county, looking at the critical housing needs and all those things, and we're making our rents align with those numbers. So I mean, I think it'll, the absorption will be very high. I think they'll probably pre-lease candidly. So we're thinking twenty-four months or less.
Which which reinforces the need for us to see a written development schedule.
I have that. And so I that will be remedied. That that has been submitted before. That was before we had the eight-week pushback on the extended abatement. But I I'll get that to you and remedy that. That's my, that's my fault.
Other questions for Mr. Gibson?
So is that twenty-four months for the first phase?
I would like it that the whole project to be completed in less than that amount of time. It's all sixty-three units, assuming that that's what gets approved by the time we go through this process.
Yeah, that's about two and a half a month.
Very achievable.
These pre, these aren't prefab, these are stick-built.
We are looking at both options. So that the only reason that, so we're weighing and measuring both as a volumetric and panelized concept or doing stick. We're looking at both. And partly that is, you know, that it's, you know, we've had issues, even I'm working on the Park House project and we were able to bring in a a really good solid group from Toledo. But uh, we would, we'd love to support the local trades, but a lot of those men and women are pulled into Ann Arbor and these other markets, so we just have to make sure that we can build it. And so our our goal is is to have, you know, if we can lean on an off-site manufacturer to provide either panels or volumetric components that just helps us build it, and we can have, we can use local crews to set it and stitch it all together. So we're trying, whatever's the best path forward is what we're going to execute.
Other questions from the commissioner? Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Well, I suspect we'll be back in a moment here.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Are there folks in the audience? First, we'll take anybody that's present physically uh that wish to comment on this to the planning commission. If you would step forward and give us your payment address and tell us what you'd like to say.
My name's Gail Dunaway. Hi, neighbor.
Thank you.
I live on four two three Elm Street, working on all the nightmares out there. I hope this doesn't come to be a nightmare. My first question is, if these are rentals, is there going to be an onsite manager? And I'll put it in three parts and then you answer, however. Um, who's going to take care of maintenance? Like outdoor maintenance, is that the individual renters? Because I live in a neighborhood with a lot of renters. They don't do a lot of outdoor maintenance. And thirdly, if this is for, is this going to be income-based? So it's going to be people who already live in Adrian? What about outsiders who come to the town periodically, like parents and relatives of college students who will only be there maybe for a weekend and the unit is empty for a good part of the year? So, address it however.
Okay, thank you. Um, we'll we'll come back. Anyone else?
Nancy Pellow, St. Joseph Street, Adrian. My concern is similar to Gail's. I just want to make sure that there's some kind of maintenance and oversight program because, as you know, the city of Adrian is working very, very hard right now to clean up blight. And we don't want to have another incident. So I think that we need to understand what rules are going to be in place to maintain and improve our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone online that wishes to address the planning commission on this particular project? No, I guess not. Okay. We'll check on that in case there is someone online that wishes to make a comment. Okay. Thank you. Then commission discussion on the specifics of the project. Mr. Gibson, if you wouldn't mind coming back to the podium. Gail's questions were similar to the ones I had too. Uh, will there be onsite management for the project?
There will be onsite third-party management. It it it's not financially expedient for us to manage it, me personally, because, one, I live three hours away, and secondly, it's not enough density. So we would be using a local third-party management group to manage those assets.
There will be someone.
Yes, on on it'd be a daily, yes. And then on top of that, to answer your questions, this is one legal description. So these aren't subparceled out. It it'll be almost like a condo association in the sense that we will be maintaining the full exterior of all the building, all the all the landscaping, all the mowing, all the trash, all the everything. So all maintenance and then all um landscaping, all of that stuff would be on our side of the table. And furthermore, even utilities are all on us. We're only going to have one meter on site as it's currently being discussed with Will Sadler. So they will all individually sub-meter. There's systems for all of that so that we can track all that. There's modern technologies. It's great. So we're going to do one meter and that way you only have to bill us and you're not chasing tenants around and dealing with all of that.
The same is true for gas and electric or just with water?
Uh, we're do, we're currently, we're doing all of it. That, well, electric will be individual. That'll be individually metered. But but and 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 more than likely, depends on a number of factors. We have gas on site, but I we may go pure electric. It just depends on a number of factors.
Some other issues relative to the to the specifics of the.
Yes, sir.
We do need to show on here uh the calculations that demonstrate that twenty percent of the property is open space. I suspect, I suspect that it is, but we don't see the calculations here.
It is on there.
Looks like it is, but we need to prove, we need to show the proof of that.
Okay.
Two, also, how will the property be screened from the existing Grace Christmas Building?
Very good question.
It could be with landscaping.
It's going to be that.
But we'll need to show that on the on the plan.
Sure.
We will need to see stormwater detention plan. Again, whether there needs to be a stormwater detention pond remains to be seen. We just need to see how we determine that.
It's our understanding with conversations we've had, we are actually decreasing the impervious uh surface area there based on the current layout. And so we can utilize existing storm sewer and how that all runs off and how that's all handled is my understanding. But we will continue to work on the stormwater prevention plan and and all of that.
Our our, the county drain commission provides some guidelines for that, and we would need this to be consistent.
Yes, sir.
So.
Yep. So that's a valid question, and staff brought that up and the report, the staff report, so.
You only have one little dumpster there.
Yeah, it's it's going to end up being probably at least two. Uh, we're we're going to make that correction, staff, staff.
Maybe four?
Well, so it depends on how big we go, right? So it's, so if we if we're doing six yards, maybe four, if we're doing eight yards and maybe three. So that, well, we're going to correct that. Staff's already brought that to our attention.
How will will each resident be expected to take the trash to the dumpster or is it going to be outside? I mean, you're right.
It would be up to.
Right on the country there.
It would be, it would be up to, it would be up to the tenant to take their their trash. Current, current. The current concept is it's the tenant's responsibility to take it from their home to the dumpster, and then we would take it from there.
It would seem then that having dumpsters very convenient, the residences would encourage that sort of behavior.
The answer is yes, but then also people don't want to live next to a dumpster.
No.
So like, it's it's kind of a double-edged sword there. So what we're we're going, that staff brought that to our attention. We'll we'll remedy that.
Okay.
So a question here. So would we not um most of us that have rental houses or own our homes? We we have a a program where we're paying with through our taxes to have a a trash in a recycling container. Would that not be the same in this? This uh development?
No.
I want to know why. It's okay to ask that question, isn't it?
Yeah, it's okay to ask that question.
It would be in the nature of a multifamily, the way our uh trash ordinance would look at it, because it's one undivided parcel with sixty-three units on it.
All right. Seems like a lot of dumpsters to me, but that's just a.
Well, it's it's sixty-some pieces of, you know, sixty families.
I'm saying that, yeah.
Is there a, explain to me, are these at the at the far northwest corner? Are those basketball courts, tennis court?
We were thinking to be pickleball. Yeah. We we were assuming pickleball. There's also a community room on the front. And I'm I'm happy to preempt there's and address some staff's questions if, and if you're going to go through staff's questions, I'll let you do that. But I can, I can preempt some of that and address some of those questions and concerns if you'd like.
Well, and one issue would would be too that we need to probably have sidewalks running out to those.
So the challenge with that is, how do we egress a, an ingress a fire truck? Because there, we I we were planning on having a gate at the back of there that could that could be opened to let a fire truck drive through the property. So we would, we could do a painted crosswalk or come up with some consideration.
Painted crosswalk probably serves the same purpose, yeah.
Yes, sir. So we we'll we'll make some sort of pedestrian consideration.
Consider before we see a final.
Sure, it's again, we just got that feedback just within the last day. So we're going to be applying that. And and the feedback we get from everyone here today as well.
Well, some other things that, just to make sure they're on the record, that I think staff has already expressed to you then that the the parking areas will need to have concrete curbs.
Yep.
And um uh sidewalks will need to be concrete as well, not just, you know, gravel pathways. I think it's our our engineering department has requested that the, in fact, not just requested, uh, the uh southernmost drive onto Camoli will need to be closed off.
So I I have a, I have a bit of a question with that, um, concern with that. It's it's an existing cut, so it's already there. It's already doing what it's doing. The challenge is we end up losing parking space density if we do that. And and then also that that lets us have a separate egress-ingress for the, like, visitors and folks that would come to the community center and that, and so that would not be, so you'd have the neighborhood entrance, which is off Riverside. And then you could have more of a visitor entrance for events and different things in the community building, and that was our vision for that space.
We're just just talking about the the curb cut that's closest to Riverside off of Camoli. There's still a curb cut into that parking lot. And the parking lot could still circulate. You might have to add a lane on the side of it to get down to the southernmost bay, but uh, it's too close to the intersection and.
How did it get?
Prevented today.
It's it's been there a long time.
Gotcha. Well, we'll work through.
Consider that.
Yeah, we'll work with staff and we'll do what's what's required. But for us, it's we want to do our best to make sure that that's a usable space for that application.
Okay. Explain to me about the off-street loading zone and why is there, if we need that, why is there only one of them?
Well, we just figured that, like, if people, they that the intention of that was to be able to have a place where you could pull out of the lane, have a longer run, if you've got a moving vehicle, different things like that, just to have a space to do that, not block the lane.
But it only really serves like.
It's kind of in the middle of the project, so.
Mr. Chair, I think the fact is that there's existing pavement there that they're trying to avoid removing. That's the drop-off for the hospital.
Okay.
That's also, so again, back to the original, using utilizing as much as existing infrastructure as we can, using the existing curb and gutter, maintaining all of that. There's value in that. And.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioners, other issues that we want them to consider before they would come back to us with a final, or commissioners or staff, either way?
So, well, I just have a question. The uh, the twenty-foot setback setback versus a normal twenty-five?
On Camoli?
Yeah, as are we, uh, I guess, I guess we need to decide if that's okay, right?
Yes.
Want to point that out that if we approve this, that's going to be uh contingent on that, right?
It is as drawn, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, that was one of a couple of things we wanted you to discuss. I don't know that staff was taking a position one way or the other on it, but the normal requirement uh for a residential district would be a twenty-five-foot setback, whereas twenty is proposed along Camoli. Uh, we also suggested that you discuss the renderings that you've got as relates to the uh dwelling units that is part of what you can require uh as a condition of a planned unit development, uh, that they conform to those designs that you've received. So I think particularly in a community like this where I know there's a lot of density, uh, it's important to set some standards for what the units are going to look like, that the not look like a, you know, a barracks or something like that, that there's the interest and variety in the housing types. Unlike something else that we might have approved recently. So I I think you should have a discussion about that and be comfortable with it. And as we get to the the final approval and set conditions that uh, you know, there'd be a requirement that there be a certain amount of variety and um, in the style of housing that uh is provided, so it's not monotonous. Think you probably brought up most of the other staff comments, but they're all addressed by underlining in our report. And uh, we would suggest that those be conditions of approval.
Um, speaking of the design of of the unit designs, I I see in the recently renderings I have, we've got Plan A and Plan D. Is there a B and a C?
There is. We we updated that and maybe there's a copy right there for you.
Oh.
There's, so they submitted copies.
Oh, there's a, okay. Okay, okay. Thank you. Commissioners, thoughts on on the uh variety of designs? There are they?
It broke on them and they're not.
You like.
They don't look like a barrack as.
You like that there's hip roof?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. But are there, are there four variations? Is that what they're?
That's what we currently have, and 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 some of them will be mirrored. So meaning that, like, you know what I'm saying? Yeah.
Are they all two stories?
Um, currently, that is the way they're being laid out, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Gauss, any comments on that? Johnson? Watson? Okay, what are our thoughts on the Camoli setback? The requirements would be a twenty-four-foot setback, the twenty-five, uh, the diagram showed is twenty.
It's not a requirement as such. That's the usual.
Okay.
For a residential district.
Are the, are those units that face Camoli? Are those the, do the front doors face Camoli or do they face the green space?
It's the, it's it's the green space.
Okay.
So they face it?
Yeah.
They face it, yeah.
And I say front yard only because it's a street.
Right, right, right. That's why I was asking for the verification.
Yeah, again, back to to the, the greater idea is to to have it like correct, correct, and a and a shared green space that everybody is looking at.
So would these have backyards? Like, would this be a door in the back?
The the egresses are laid out in the plans for each unit, and so like, they'll egress out how they, how they're, how they're shown and configured. But yeah, it is a shared green space and it's all open.
My my concern is, I I live in an apartment style like this, and people tend to put a lot of junk in their backs, so.
Valid point. We have, so there's a large metal building on site. Our our intention is to keep that building and do onsite storage. So for that, that way you you can have your bikes and your this and your that, yeah. So for that, that way you, you can have your bikes and your this and your that, yeah. One hundred percent. So we'll have that, 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 that space is heated and.
Is that shown on the diagram?
It is a building on, it's in the northwest corner and it is shown on the, it's, it's just a large rectangle in the, in the northwest corner.
Is this, this isn't the first one of these you've done, right?
It is not. This is not the first project I've done. Or do you mean like this level of density or like this exact project?
You have done similar projects, maybe not as dense as this.
Yeah, I've done tons of neighborhoods.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have an example of what the rules are?
As far as like government, like governance for like, like for the tenants?
Yeah, like three grills and twelve bikes and a playset that they shove in at twenty feet.
Sure.
You know, are, is there a, is there a set of rules you guys have used that say, here's what you can and cannot do?
I, I do not have a set of rules for a high-density single family. We will of course have those and that will all be monitored. The goal is to have this be open. I, we won't have this be cluttered. That'll be in their leases.
Yeah, I'll say that.
Uh, so, so I, I get that, but the, but the idea.
I just wanted, that, that's what I, before I prove something in the next step, I want to see that that.
Understood. We'll, we'll, we'll come up with that. That's valid. And, and, and again, we're trying to think ahead of that. People have stuff. And, and number one, if you look at the units, they're not tiny and there's, there's plenty of storage in those units on purpose. And that's because we know people have stuff. And then for the things that are outdoor things that may not fit inside the house, that's why we're maintaining at least one of those buildings. And, but primarily what we have drawn is the larger building will subdivide that. So it's secured for folks and they can store their bigger items there and have direct access onsite. Okay. Perfect.
So perhaps screening could be.
Well, except that, that's kind of messy too, can, can be. You, you mean not long.
Just for those particular units, if we're going to reduce the setback like that, um, you know, it's only five units. Do, you know, some sort of landscaping treatment.
Is some barrier, a visual barrier there for those five units?
Okay.
It's good for the units too, because.
Yeah, yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
So we're, we don't necessarily have a problem with the twenty-foot setback if in fact there's some screening between the, the units and the.
That's a fair concession.
Right away. Okay. Other questions or comments from the commission? With that all said, uh, I would see us being able to approve the preliminary proposal, uh, with uh, the condition that the items we've discussed and that staff has outlined are addressed in the, in the next iteration.
Yes, sir.
And if that's okay with the commissioners, commissioners, yes.
The, the draft resolution provides for that.
Exactly.
The resolution.
And if, if that's okay with everyone, we would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution the staff has provided.
When should we expect that next iteration, iteration?
Yeah, you know what I'm saying? The next, the next.
The next, yeah, the next, uh, plan, the, the final.
So I, I mean, I, I'll, I'll have to confirm this with our civil engineers, but I don't know why we couldn't have this in thirty days based on what we have. We've already done a lot of work, but I mean, I guess worst case it's sixty. So I'd see you here in October. But fast.
You get it, it's when you get approved.
Yeah, our, our next meeting is September ten.
Yep.
So, and we would need to have it, so, not, not, not the ninth or, or the eighth. No, yeah, exactly. So October probably is good. Okay, back then to, if, if this is okay with everyone, uh, we would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution that's been provided.
So move.
Or have a motion and support if we could have a roll call, please.
Uh, Johnson, support. Taylor, support. Chikovitz?
Yes.
Gauss?
Yeah.
Watson?
Or motion passed unanimously.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Forward to hearing from you in the future.
Appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Uh, next item on our agenda is, uh, let's, let me get to the right page here. Is consideration of case twenty-four seventeen, a site plan review for one thirty-sixth South Main Street. And is there someone here to address that particular matter? Sir, we have a, we have a copy of the, uh, of this, and if you could give us your name and very briefly tell us what it is you're proposing to do.
Michael Nysley with, uh, Dyce Style Design Architects Tecumseh. The, uh, proposed plan is to kind of restore one thirty-sixth South Main Street. Uh, bring it back, uh, bring it back to life. It was a theater for a while and we're planning to uh, bring back the, uh, kind of entertainment dining, uh, uh, space. Uh, have a full-service restaurant in the building. Uh, a beer garden space in the, on the west side of the building. And, uh, improve the storefront as well.
For those, for those not familiar, this is the former Seasons Restaurant or prior to that, the Studio South.
Yep.
Movie theater.
That's the building.
Uh, questions for Mr. Isaac?
I didn't realize until I looked at your plan that, uh, the space behind the building is, is really yours and not where most of us have driven for years. And I'm, and I must say that that's a delightful thing to find out, that you can have that space back there for outdoor dining and a covered bar. I didn't just notice that, but, uh, um, it's a great reuse of the building. Are you able to save the murals?
Pardon?
Are the murals still?
Yes.
intact?
Yes, yep. There's a dehumidifiers in the building, uh, trying to preserve all that right now. So. Yep, it's.
The Tobin Yost. He's Yost? Host. The guy who.
Yeah, the guy designed.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, yes. Any other questions for the petitioner?
Are you adding one apartment?
Uh, no, we're not adding any apartments. There's four there right now.
Three there. That's right. I thought there were three there, but somewhere I thought I read that you were going to add an apartment, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Don't go off, uh, because we'll, I still have a few questions relative to the details, if you don't mind. So is there anyone in the audience, either in present, present or online, that wishes to address the planning commission on this particular project? Okay, well, if you don't mind, uh, the, the issue that I wanted to bring up, bring up, um, you know, the, the ordinance for downtown requires that thirty percent of the front be in glass. And I suspect that it is, but if you could show us the calculations.
I will provide those.
Just to verify that. Um, and I think probably you already know this, but, uh, uh, the marquee sign extends farther out than would normally be permitted.
Yes.
You can go to the city commission, you'll have to get city commission permission for it as presented.
Okay.
As, as you've proposed it. Um, also since, uh, if, if we, if in fact we are going to approve this, uh, this plan tonight, that, that wouldn't include approving the signage.
Correct.
Separate, separate permits for that.
Yep, yep. We're actually working on the, uh, the, uh, canopy right now to figure out, you know, some of the details, uh, that make it, uh, constructible.
Okay, that would be good, yeah. Okay, any other comments or questions relative to this project? Sounds exciting.
We're excited to be part of this.
Cool.
My clients are right here with.
Just FYI, so the, because you're in the DDA, the DDA also needs to review and approve your signs. So you get with Jay when you have your sign plan ready and there's a process where the DDA votes on it as well.
Alright, will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, folks staff has reviewed this and other than those things I mentioned, uh, I think that was everything that all the staff concerns, I think we covered there. Was there anything else? The marquee needing special permission, you know, the signage, okay.
We'll do approve the resolution.
Hey, we have a motion from Commissioner Watson and support from Commissioner Taylor. We could have a roll call vote, please.
Watson?
Or.
Johnson, support. Gauss?
Support.
Taylor?
Support.
Chikovitz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Very good, thank you. Um, that concludes the specific agenda items. Is there any other business to come before the planning commission this evening? Is there anyone that wants to address the planning commission and any other, uh, uh, issues? Hearing none, we would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Support.
Motion and support, all those in favor, please indicate. So by saying aye,
aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.